... and shortly after that, the two young men right here in the blue is gonna lead us on the pledge of allegiance, alright? Right at the... Yes, you.
Yes, sir.
Everybody stand please.
Amen. Father God, we just thank you, praise you God, and we honor you. And God, we thank you. First of all, we should pray for all those supplication praying Thanksgiving for all, God, for those, especially those who are in authority. So we pray for our mayor, pray for our council, God. We pray even for those who are in authority, the chief, those who helped make this city great. Father, we thank you for this great city. And Father, we even now pray your protection over this city, your keeping us, brought bring us together as one. And God, we give you the glory, all the honor and all the praise. God, we thank you for this great meeting to take this city forward. We bless you for all things, and we give you glory even now, touch the hearts of all of us, God, and bring us in oneness and unity to make this city a great city, is my prayer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Come on up here, man. Flag. Let's leave it in place.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Pastor Moses. Thank you, sir. Next item is Mayor's comments. As always, good evening everyone and welcome. It seems that too often I've had to begin council meeting with condolences. We've lost a number of leaders in Waukegan in recent weeks that needs mentioning. Pastor Dr. Mary Lacy, whose acts of generosity knew no bounds. Everyone knew of the annual Christmas parade at the jail, but her actions went far beyond that. The Reverend Dr. W. Gil Devoe, who led the first United Methodist Church of Waukegan before serving as chaplain for the City of Waukegan Council for well over 20 years. Sally Cosio, Don Van de Vinder, who served on the Civil Service Commission. And lastly, from the City of Waukegan, we must send our condolences to our rural community for the horrific shooting that took place last week. The City of Waukegan continues to push for more transparency and information regarding the ethylene oxide issue. Today, I along with members of my staff, US Senate, US House, Illinois Senate, Illinois House, Lake County Health Department, and members of the Metropolitan Mayor's Conference, met with the US EPA regarding US EPA's air quality policies and programs. We're advocating for air monitoring, will continue to regularly speak and meet with our local state and federal partners to get progress. Of company events, Congressman Brad Snyder is on a district-wide listening tour to hear directly from constituents and community leaders. There will be a roundtable discussion about immigration and access to education this Friday at 2:30 at the Community Center at 914 8th Street. This weekend is the Waukegan High School play, She Kills Monsters, starting Friday at 7:00 PM at Trap Auditorium. The play also will be also be performed on Saturday 7:00 PM and Sunday 2:00 PM. Crystal Ray St. Martin is hosting its first student art show at reception on Saturday, Saturday the 23rd at 6:00 PM at the school located at 3106 Beverly Road, affectionately known as the old Kmart building. On Saturday is a very popular College of Lake County 35th Annual Salute to Gospel at the Genesee Theater starting at 7:00 PM. Tickets are available through COC James Lumber Center website or calling 847-543-2300. The comedy Anton and Show Business is at Three Brothers Theater, 221 North Genesee Street, and Saturday through March the 9th. Tickets are available online or at the box office. Next, I'm gonna ask Director of Public Works, Mr. Mike Hewitt, to briefly discuss the process for fixing potholes, which as we've all seen, every community has had a lot with this season considering extreme weather fluctuation. Mike, your team?
Let me start off by saying what an honor it is to be in front of the council and the residents of the City of Waukegan. To talk about probably one of the three most favorite subjects I have, which is potholes. First off, I would like to introduce some of the war, my best people on the war front of potholes. That would be Chris Garland, the pothole and patch supervisor.
Good to meet you all. Again, I'm Chris Garland, and I am the foreman for the asphalt department. I've been a foreman for a little over 10 years, and I've been working for the city for over 25 years. So this is something that we're gonna be dealing with every winter, and it's something that, you know, we can't get behind in, and it's something that we can, you know, stay forward. So we just ask that you guys be patient with us, and we'll get to it, and we'll knock 'em out. I got two of my workers here. They have fun with me. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Marcus Jordan. Like Chris said, I'm in asphalt department. Piggyback off of what he said, it is a problem, but we're working every day to sit there and be a solution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Francisco Alba. I've been a city employee for almost 20 years, and the last 20 years it's been a problem. We try to get what we can, we work with what we got. So we just ask you guys to be patient and work with us, because they're out there. Those folks are relentless. So just work, be a little patient, work with us. That's all we ask.
Now I can go into a little bit of the process. To remind all residents, if they have potholes or see potholes, to call 360-0944. That's the Public Works Department. If you have an issue, please call us, because we're out there, but we probably see them, but maybe not. And we really would appreciate your patience in what we do. So the starting, what we've been doing is, we usually have a two crews out, and because of the abundance of potholes, because of the fluctuation in weather, now we have four crews out, and I'm hoping to probably get a fifth. So what we've been doing is, we have two crews doing mains. We have one crew that's kind of an alternate going out and doing some of the side streets in areas by plow route. And the third is going to be what we call our junk team, which is going to take care of complaints as they come in. Be patient with us. They're out there. There's quite a few of them. And the one thing about it is, they will eventually go away as soon as the temperatures start to moderate. Because what happens is, at night, it gets very cold, but during the day, it's nice. Even if it isn't, as you'll notice, the sun's getting higher in the sky. So what happens is, it heats the blacktop. Even if it's not even a freezing, it'll heat it up. We put the patch in, and if it gets really cold that night, it has a tendency of either popping out or surging up. And because of the amount of snow we've had, seems like every other day, that was one of my other favorites three subjects, we've been out plowing the snow, which has a tendency of popping them out. So if you've been very, very patient, we will look to them, and we appreciate all your tolerance. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike, and your team. Chris Jordan, appreciate it. Next, there, obviously, we've received some calls and merkins to our fire department to give us some information and better communication and to prevent misinformation. I'm gonna ask that our chief, Carl, is the city and the residence chief negotiator for the ongoing fire department negotiation. Carl?
Good evening. Carl Addison, serving as your labor counsel in the number of your current bargaining units that are up. But particularly, what I want to talk about tonight is the current negotiations as well as the political climate of collective bargaining. Public sector collective bargaining is different than the private sector. You don't have a lot of public information campaigns going on during private sector issues between employers and the unions like we do in the public sector. Public employees have the absolute right to engage in collective bargaining as well as political activities, as long as they're not doing it on time. Okay? They gotta do it off their work time. They have the right to do so. And I encourage you as elected officials not to get upset if your employees are engaging in political activities. They have the right to do so. Unfortunately, though, when we do get information that is part of political campaigns at the same time as there's collective bargaining going on, the two get intertwined, and not always in the best way. It doesn't help to get the process completed quicker. It rarely works to either side's advantage to engage in public collective bargaining. So I'm not gonna get into public issues of where we are, what the issues are at the bargaining table. We are working with the federal mediator. We will get back there. Everybody's frustrated with the length of time that is taken. I canceled the last two sessions. I went on my honeymoon and spent most of the time on bedrest with the flu, and that didn't help to come back and share it with everybody in the fire department. So I did not. And then with press of business trying to catch up, I just had to cancel the last session last week. So I apologize for that, because I hate to cancel collective bargaining sessions, because it is so difficult to get schedules together to do another session. But we will do so. There's a danger when you have public information disseminated that is really part of collective bargaining. And some of the information that is being disseminated has raised questions. You know, is it a dangerous staffing level in the fire department? What's the city doing? And by staffing a couple of stations the way you do as junk companies is that putting those areas of the city in greater danger? There's also information out that there's been an increase in calls in the last 10 years, not an increase in the number of firefighters. Both are true. If you do the math, and most of the call increases certainly in the medical, emergency medical services, fire calls are actually down. But it equals about .8 call per day per station increase in the last 10 years. Not a huge increase when you look at it on a per station per day basis. But when you say it's about a 2,000 call increase, that is a lot. That's a much more difficult number to wrap your head around. So I want you to look at it as what is it per station per day, and it's .8 per day. So not a huge increase, but you do need to exercise your responsibility to look at, are we properly staffing the fire department? What I see, and our firm represents probably 125 fire departments in the state of Illinois. I have engaged in collective bargaining on behalf of municipal clients for over 32 years. I understand the conflicts between budget, levels of service, and competing demands of employees versus management. We have to be able to see each other. I'm not talking into this. I'll do better. So with the increases mostly in the EMS side of things, what have other departments doing? There are a lot of departments that have just paramedics, manning your ambulances. There's one thing that you might want to look at for the future. It's an issue for collective bargaining, but you can certainly look at that. A lot of places have contracted out some of their paramedic services or supplemented it by adding contracts. That causes a lot of strife, and it's not something I'm coming in here and telling you to do. I'm just saying, there, if you're worried about calls, and what are we gonna do? It's EMS calls that we need to worry about. We need to look at the EMS staffing, more so than just fire staffing. Yet in one way, you can add diversity to the department, more so, more readily probably through contracting than you can through just continuing the current hiring process. It's one of the main difficulties we are seeing in the fire service throughout the state. The state union as well as management teams are working on doing so. It's just very difficult to do so. So we'll likely be looking at the EMS staffing more so in collective bargaining, and I urge the city to do so as well. The biggest concern and caution that I have been giving to you is not to put something in the contract that you can't afford. We could go, you could agree, yes, let's have 29 people on duty every day. What will that cost? We're looking at, can we do that in overtime? And what would just the overtime cost do? And that's a Band-Aid. Every place that I have negotiated and increased numbers in the contract for staffing, initially it seems we're gonna do it by overtime. That only lasts for a short period of time before we put too much stress on your current staffing. And you will need, if you do something like that, it will not be long before this city will have to look at adding personnel. And when the average firefighter costs somewhere between $100 and $150,000, depending on where they are, but let's just say we're all brand new firefighters, it's gonna be at least $100,000 per firefighter to fully equip them, train them, provide their pension, provide their health insurance, and provide their salaries. It's over $100,000 per person. And you've got three shifts. Do you need six more? Do you need 12 more? If it's six more, it's $900,000. If it's 12 more, you're dealing with $1.8 million. Can we get to that? That's for you. That's a policy issues and how you spend your money and how you collect your money. But I caution, don't agree to something you cannot do, because you lose the trust of your employees when you overpromise. So that's one of the things that we've gotta make sure where you stand. Alderman, it's up to you. You give me direction. I'm the mouthpiece for you, the spokesperson for you, the advocate for you. But you have to decide how to do the best you can to provide the highest level of services with the money you have. I just don't want you to agree to a number in the contract that you won't be able to meet. And then what are you going to do? What's the alternative? What other areas of your budget are you going to cut because you've got this commitment in writing and a collective bargaining that you have to meet? Those are your decisions, not mine. It's your city. Happy birthday on Saturday, I believe, 160 years. I'm glad to be here. What can I do, Mayor? Anything else you want to do? Have any questions for me?
No, I was just wanted to make sure we get that out. I don't know if anybody up here at this time, but we just probably wanna just wait until the collective bargain and maybe go in the back room to talk about it. Is that okay with anybody? Or I can always, the Alderman can always call you offline if there's a...
Yes, sir.
Alright?
And I promise I will get mediation back together, and hopefully we can get this done without going to arbitration. It's much better. We do it together, and that's my task and my goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Carl. Appreciate it. Alright. Next on the agenda, we have Motion of Alderman Taylor, Second of all, Alderman Bolton, to approve regular meeting minutes from Monday, February 4th, 2019. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passing carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk?
Alright. Coming up, you have three minutes. Please address the council. It's your time to address the council. And first up is Nancy Flores.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Flores, and I am the auction chairperson for the Waukegan High School Athletic Booster Club. I have volunteered with the Booster Club for over 10 years in several different levels. I'm also a parent of four Waukegan High School athletes, three who've already graduated, and one who's currently a senior this year. And I'm sure we have former student athletes or other parents of student athletes in the audience tonight. I'm here to invite everyone to our 22nd annual silent auction fundraiser. It's our biggest fundraiser to benefit our athletic programs and our student athletes. Thanks to the generosity of people like you, the parents and family members, business partners in this city, the Waukegan High School Athletic Booster Club has been able to raise funds for scholarships, coaching materials, and training equipment, such as softball wind screens, video equipment for recruiting, track hurdles, ball machines, and much more. These items are for the benefit of the students involved in the various athletic programs in order to compete at a higher level. In the last 10 years, we have been able to provide these programs with over $250,000 in enhancements and scholarships, and we pledge to continue to achieve such success for our students' futures. We've had student athletes who graduated from Waukegan High School and went on to play sports in college, and then some who've become professional athletes. Join us for an evening of live music, silent auction, raffles, appetizers, cash bar, and fellowship. We invite all parents, adult family members, teachers, coaches, business partners, alumni, and the public. You can buy tickets from me or our coaches or online through Eventbrite. This year's event will take place Saturday, March 9th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Lake County Sports Center at 351 Oakwood Avenue in Waukegan. Please help us in supporting the students by attending or contributing to this worthy cause. The Booster Club and their yearly fundraiser has helped many student athletes, including my own, and with your help, they will continue to do so. I will have some flyers in the back with more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena Gomez-Bellos.
Good evening, everyone. Selena Gomez-Bellos, Executive Director of the Waukegan Public Library. Just have a couple of announcements for you today. I wanted to remind everybody that our winter reading program, which has reached the reading summit, you still have time to join. There are prizes. You have till March 3rd to do that, so I encourage you to do that. We had a change in our board meeting date. It is usually the third Wednesday. This month only it'll be on Thursday this week. So we had to change to accommodate some schedules. So our board meeting will be on Thursday instead of Wednesday. I wanted to thank those that were able to make our breaking bread program. I unfortunately was out of town, but I saw some really wonderful pictures and just a great program. It's our second annual breaking bread, and I hope that this is a tradition that we're able to continue every year. Lastly, really quick, I don't know if you realize this, today's my anniversary. I have been with you now for one year exactly. This has been very exciting. To celebrate and to get myself out of my office more, you know, we're always promoting reading, and to make sure that I get to read some of the books I want to read, I am going to be leading a book discussion group for adults on the first Tuesday evening of the month at 6:00 PM. It is called I Meant to Read That, because that's pretty much what it is. I meant to read these books, and I didn't get to them. And so I hope you'll join me in reading them. Our first book is gonna be Hunger by Roxane Gay. It's a fantastic book. I'm very excited and looking forward to discussing this with people. I do have some flyers for you all, and I'll have a few extra out on the table. But you're welcome to check our website and Facebook page soon. It should be going up very quickly. Unless there's any other questions, that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Asfa Udin?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Adfa Udin. I'm the Imam at Islamic Foundation North in Waukegan. Lead a congregation of 750 people. The reason why I'm here today is to demand independent air testing for ethylene oxide emissions. I understand that Medline... I understand that Medline in Waukegan is within their limits to allow ethylene oxide emission. And I also understand that Medline is following the letter of the law. But legal air pollution is still dangerous. Legal air pollution can still cause cancer. Legal air pollution can cause miscarriages. The National Air Toxic Assessment, which is the EPA's latest estimate of cancer risk, showed in some spots in Lake County, cancer risks are more than five times higher than the national average. We have to ask ourselves why. According to the EPA, certain areas in Waukegan have a much higher cancer risk than surrounding communities. And we all agree that ethylene oxide is a dangerous chemical. We all agree every person deserves the right to breathe clean air. We all agree that our children are especially at risk from breathing this cancer-causing chemical. And we all agree that tens of thousands of people living in the Lake County area could be in danger of developing cancer. Right now, the trust in the elected officials is low, as the authorities did not warn the public of the potential dangers, even though they knew. But to those who are in power in Waukegan, you have an opportunity to gain that trust. If you make the right decision and you decide to have independent air testing, then I'm confident that the folks in Gurnee will also follow in your footsteps. The people in... I'm confident that the people in power in Gurnee will also follow in your footsteps and have independent air testing. Respected Mayor, Honorable Alderman, let's continue what our friends in Willowbrook have started, demanding clean air for our residents in Waukegan, demanding independent air testing for ethylene oxide emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Gurgette. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also here tonight to talk about ethylene oxide emissions in our community. Those of us interested in this, we're very interested in seeing what happened this past week in Willowbrook. There, it was only after months of community organization and pressure that independent air quality testing was undertaken. When those results were published, it took the EPA less than two weeks to step in and stop this plant from continuing to emit this carcinogen into their community. Levels of ethylene oxide were found in the air of their schools and residential areas at tens to hundreds of times higher than the EPA's established risk levels. At the beginning of the week, there were only 26 facilities in this country that were authorized to emit ethylene oxide. At the end of last week, there was only 25. Two of those are within five miles of where we're standing right now. Those two are Medline in Waukegan and Vantage Chemical in Gurnee. The most recent publicly accessible data that the EPA has on the Waukegan Medline facility is five years out of date, and was only slightly lower than the Steragenex facility that was closed down. This facility is in the ninth ward of Waukegan, and is very near to the Greenbelt and neighborhoods in the second ward. The most recent calculated emissions from Vantage Chemical are twice as high as those from Steragenex that was shut down by the EPA. Vantage is located in Gurnee, but is bounded on the north by Waukegan's eighth ward, on the east by the third and the fifth ward, on the south by the ninth ward. At this point, I fail to see why the city does not immediately pursue independent air quality testing. There's already a model established, and one of the scientists on our team has gotten a formal quote for this testing, which I'm passing on to you. Right now, we need action and we need results at a local level. The costs to do the type of testing that we are requesting are minimal, especially compared to even one person dying of these preventable toxic carcinogenic emissions. I want to be very clear, the best-case scenario for all of us is that these tests are done, and that no ethylene oxide is found in our air. If elevated levels are found, we want these facilities to comply with the EPA's air quality standards immediately, because if they don't, we... standards immediately, because if they don't, we all saw what happened in Willowbrook, and no one in this room wants these jobs to disappear from Waukegan. We all ask you to be the leaders that we know you can be. We know that you want to do the right thing for your community. Step up and lead us to a safer and healthier future and be a beacon of progress in Lake County and in the great state of Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanta Pamioto.
Good evening. Thank you for your audience. I'm too here to speak about the ethylene oxide emission in our community. My name is Yolanta. I live in Gurnee, but I live very close to Medline as well. It's within two miles of my home. Exactly 110 days ago, 110 days, let me repeat, Lake County residents found out about the alarming high levels of a Class 1 carcinogenic ethylene oxide being emitted into our air by Medline and Vantage Specialty Chemicals. As the City Council is already aware, ethylene oxide is a scientifically proven cancer and reproductive hazard. There is no dispute about that fact. I am part of a growing group of concerned citizens who are demanding action to ban ETO emissions near our schools and homes through regulation and meaningful legislation. I ask of the Waukegan leadership to conduct independent air testing and to demand that the EPA conduct independent air testing as well. Further, we need to commission an in-depth Lake County cancer study to see if residents living closest to Medline and Vantage are experiencing higher levels of health problems than other areas. The Stop ETO in Lake County Team will be hosting a meeting on Sunday, February 24th, at 1:30 PM at the Gurnee Library to discuss ethylene oxide emissions in our community. I would like to invite you all to participate in a vibrant discussion. The intent of the meeting will be to have an open two-way dialogue between our officials and between the residents, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Diaz.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. I'm back again, and also talking about ethylene oxide, asking once again that the City of Waukegan consider contracting for air testing around the Medline facility and the impacted neighborhoods also, such as mine, Pleasant Hill, as Willowbrook did. We cannot wait for the EPA to do this. We have to take action now. I realize that Medline is not in the heart of Waukegan as Steragenex is in Willowbrook. Residents of the west side of Waukegan deserve to have the same action that the residents in Willowbrook did and have that testing done to ensure the protection of our families. I know you feel you're doing all that you can do, and I appreciate the efforts that you've taken thus far. I'm here to say it isn't enough. We have to find a way to fund this testing, as Willowbrook did. We can't wait until someone can confirm that we have a cancer cluster, that we see more of our neighbors suffer from cancer, whether they die or not. Cancer is the worst disease, and we've all seen people go through it. I'm talking, think creatively here. We've got to find a way in our budget to finance creatively, a way to come up with $100,000. There's a line item in here tonight for approval for Fountain Square Common Area, $86,000. I am sure that the residents that live in and around Fountain Square, those Fountain Square Apartments that are over there, the folks that visit Walmart that live nearby in Waukegan, would much rather see that money go to ensure that we're testing the air so we know what we're dealing with and that we can improve our air quality over having common areas improved. And I'm not sure what that money was intended for, I'm just saying, let's find a way. There was another item in a previous meeting, from January 22nd in fact, where we managed to save $1 million on a project or close to it. I don't know if that money could be repurposed for this testing. I'm just saying, I'm asking each and every one of you to look at the Waukegan budget and to find a way to do this testing. I urge you now to act and protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin Mathis.
Good evening. I know it's been a minute. Recovering from a knee replacement, but you know, I wanted to get down here before Black History Month ends, and I know an election is coming up. I don't know what the makeup is going to be by the next time I get down here. And so, just being Black History Month, I kind of wanted to address an issue about bullying. And being black, and most of the black people here, we know a little thing or two about bullying. And just for the definition of bullying, it's a blustering, quarrelsome, overbearing person who habitually badgers and intimidates smaller or weaker people. And some of the elements of bullying is fear and embarrassment. And in this bullying, and I think about fear, and I think about black people, we've seen it in American history, and I think we're over that. But embarrassing, being embarrassed, you know, I just hate to see people get bullied. And I personally hate to be bullied. I'm not saying I haven't been bullied, but in my lifetime, I think we've seen a lot of change with black people, and we march on. You see the double standard, and you look at the opiate crisis, the response to the opiate crisis versus the crack epidemic, you look at that response, that speaks for itself, and there's nothing wrong. We've learned, hopefully, our lesson, it was at the sake of black people. And I'm proud. I'm proud to be black. I'm proud of our history, and I'm proud of how we march on in spite of it. But sometimes I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed how we sometimes, as black people, treat one another. I mean, Mayor, sometimes, you got, are you embarrassed sometimes? I mean, Alderman Newsome, I'm sorry, Alderman Newsome, aren't you embarrassed sometimes? Alderman Bolton, aren't you embarrassed sometimes? I would ask Brother Quinn over there, but I know how he feels, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud of all you, I mean, from, in my lifetime, in 50 years, look at the change, look at the progress that we've made as black people, and we hold our heads high. And I would like to just encourage and just say that I'm proud of you as leaders. Chief Bridges, I'm proud of you. You know, I'm just proud of you, and I just keep it going. So let's keep our heads up and be positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaduja Abana.
Good evening. My name is Kaduja Abana. I'm a resident of Gurnee. I'm a physician by profession, as I stand before you. Without asking people to raise their hand, I know our lives have been touched by cancer. I'm here to talk about the same crisis you've heard about already four times here. One cancer per family is bad enough. If our community is going to see an increase in cancers, it hits very close to home. I'm here to demand of all of you as leaders representing us to please, please find budget to make sure we propose independent testing of the air quality. It's our children. It's our families. If we truly care about impacting lives of our people, please, I demand, I request, I urge, I plea, whatever word you want to use, to please find appropriate funding for a totally independent review of air quality in our society here. Thank you.
Thank you. Farzan Mahmood.
My name is Farzan Mahmood. I'm a resident of Regency Ward that falls under Ward 9 of Waukegan. I'm also here to talk about the ETO, and so I'm a physician by profession, and I'm also a father of young children. I'm concerned about the ETO toxicity in our community and demand, as the previous speakers have done, independent air testing, and wants to be aware of when it's going to be done and when the public would be made aware of the results. So that's the... Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Varey.
Hi. I'm here tonight to reiterate an issue about which I've spoken numerous times. Having lived in Waukegan for 47 years and been actively involved as a volunteer, I do believe I have a perspective that is worth your hearing. I want to be perfectly clear that my intention is not to disparage any individual who has been elected to oversee the running of the City of Waukegan. I have the deepest respect for all of you and for those who have a hope of sitting in some of your chairs in a couple of months. It is past time for the city, the size of Waukegan, to move to a council-manager form of government. A city manager is hired by a city to oversee all the operations that keep a city running as well as implement policies adopted by the city's elected leaders. A city manager holds at least a bachelor's degree in public administration or a related field. Hired by the city council, he or she supervises city departments, maintains the city's budget, and represents the city in a variety of settings. The manager researches issues important to the city and advises the mayor and the council members on the best courses of action. A city manager is an educated, credentialed, and nonpartisan professional who represents a different, more efficient way of running a city. Each of you brings something valuable to our city. You serve out of your love for Waukegan and a sincere desire to do the best you can to make it a better place for all of us who call it our home, and I am grateful for your commitment. However, and again, I intend no disrespect, none of you has the qualifications or experience that a city manager brings to the table. This is the 21st century. Our population is close to 90,000. It is critical that we utilize the best methods of moving Waukegan into as solid a future as possible. There are 51 communities in Lake County ranging in population from Old Mill Creek to Waukegan. As far as I can determine, only 18 of those communities are governed solely by elected officials. The rest employ a village administrator or a city manager. Many of the managers also work with associate or deputy managers. There is much, much more to be said than I can communicate in just three minutes. So once again, I ask you to make this a priority in the coming year, and I'll return often to give you more information and continue to urge you to action. And since Shannon hasn't dinged me yet, I'll do some...
No, you've got 19 seconds.
Extemporaneously, you guys who are running and you guys who are here, please, 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 we need smart, significant, and sustainable economic development. We don't need a casino. We don't need a casino. That's just off the top of my head. Thank you. Jack Dai.
We are proud and rightly so that the Public Works Department is so dedicated to keeping our streets clean through all the snow. We have one of the best in Lake County. The reason we have one of the best Public Works Department in Lake County is because we invest in it. We also have a great fire department, working with what, no contract for almost a year now. We don't really invest in that for as great as they are. Tonight, the city brought in its negotiator to publicly plead the city side to the ultimate and chastise the union for making some information public during negotiations, as is their right as a union. The biggest concern for the city's negotiator publicly stated was you don't want to put something in contract that you can't afford. OT is not a long-term solution, which I agree with, and eventually we have to move to full-time, which I don't see a problem with. We don't know what the 2019-2020 budget is going to look like. We have no idea what's coming up here due by the end of April. It's not available. We are okay with deficits the last two years when we wanted them for different purposes. We had no problem adding headcount in City Hall when we wanted positions filled. We bring in more money in 2019 than we have in 2017, so I would like to advocate for you guys to look at the Waukegan Fire Department and add their headcount. The second topic I want to talk about, I'm happy to hear the mayor met with Senate, House members, and the EPA, US EPA, discuss the air quality monitor. Waukegan needs to step up to the plate and cover the costs. It means more to come from municipality than it does for private funding. I can all kick in money, everyone here can kick in money, but it means a lot more to come from the City of Waukegan to fund this. We spent $2.5 million from a rainy day fund to buy and tear down the BRP site at the lakefront. We can't come up with $100,000 for a public safety concern? When's Waukegan going to learn that pollution costs more? When will Waukegan learn the pollution costs more to deal with the longer we put off? We're a city that's been caught with our pollution for decades. We're spending millions upon millions of dollars in pollution remedies. Let's stop this, nip this in the bud. No one wants air pollution. Use a rainy day fund, do the testing, invest in the residents, as you have asked the residents to invest in Waukegan. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Ahmed Faiz.
Hello. My name is Ahmed Faiz. Some of my friends told me to come and speak, say my experience about this problem.
Power, please.
Sorry. My name is Ahmed Faiz. I'm here to talk about this air. I've been struggling with my health for the last eight years. I have a store in Gurnee Mills. I do customization, so I have a lot of customers, they want to make T-shirts about their loved one that passed away, and I ask them, what's wrong? What happened? So they're 35, 38 years old, at range, dying from cancer, and I ask, because I'm running to the same problem, what happened to them? So they tell me that they died from cancer. I've been struggling for the last eight years with my health, skin problems, inflammation in my joints. I couldn't even walk to the bathroom, and my wife is going crazy. She's like, what's wrong with you? I asked that my doctors, I've been to so many doctors, nobody could tell me what's wrong with me. You just want to give me medication? And I, tell me what triggers this? I don't drink, I don't smoke, I eat healthy food, and I've been struggling. But when I go, it gets, attacks me, I fly overseas. I go back to my country, and I get, immediately within two, three weeks, I get better. I go take my kids on vacation to Florida, I get better within a week, and as soon as I come back here, I start coming down again. I struggle, and but lately, I changed, I had to change my whole diet, my whole life, and I'm just living with it, because anytime I speak to somebody, they think I'm crazy. What's wrong? I don't know. It's just happening to me. So please, if you can do anything, it is affecting people. Please, I'm a witness, I have pictures in my phone. I have problems, and I, it comes, and I can't, it just, it's crazy, I can't explain it. Doctors goes red, he can't tell me what's wrong with me. He done MRIs, x-rays, biopsy on me. I don't know what you have. So why are you giving me this medication? Well, just to help you with whatever you're going through. Well, no, tell me what it is. And I, he can't, so I, I have, I don't know, I just, it's so confusing, it's scary, it just, but I can't tell you. I get ulcers in my tongue, I get problem in my back, in my hair, in my, mostly the joint, I can't walk, and I've been, it's hard, and I don't want you to see this. So please, when you have headache in two, three days in a row, something is wrong. When you can't, you know you get a headache, you take something for it, it goes away, but when it's three days, you wake up in the morning and you have headache...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sayad Karim. Sayad Karim.
Hello, everyone. I'm also here to request the city of Waukegan to perform independent air testing of the Medline site. I'm a physician. We've known about the dangers of ethylene oxide, to children especially, and that is not news to us. What is new, that was beyond belief, is that it is being allowed to be imaged in our backyard. Sterigenics was shut down because of the health risks were severe enough to justify it. The only way to figure out the risk was to have air testing performed. That is all we are seeking. We are not demanding that this facility is be shut down, but they must change their sterilization method to one that does not kill. Thank you.
Mitch Beals. Mitch Beals.
I've also come here tonight to express my concern with the exposure of my fellow citizens to poison, which may be coming from the Medline plant. First, I want to thank you all for your obvious concern with this problem and your efforts to address it with other state and federal officials who should be doing something about it. $100,000 for testing is a lot of money. It's exactly 18 times less than what we earlier heard might be needed to hire new firefighters to respond to the increase in EMS calls, which may very well be partly due to exposure to toxic materials like ethylene oxide. We don't know that for a fact, and we won't until testing is done. I urge you to budget, to provide independent testing for this problem. Thank you.
Sandy Kubilis.
Hi, I'm Sandy Kubilis. I live on North Genesee Street, and I've been living in Waukegan for 20-some years. I also teach at the College of Lake County, the Lakeshore Campus, a few blocks from here. And I teach environmental biology. And we've talked about problems around the world in the environment. And we've been following this case very carefully about the ethylene oxide. And I'd really love to be able to tell my students that the city of Waukegan is being proactive and is doing testing to find out how contaminated the air is. Thank you.
Margaret Glasgow.
I don't even know where to start.
Margaret, can you do us a favor? I know you do. Can you point this way, please?
You're addressing the council?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm addressing the audience.
No, ma'am. This way, Margaret. Please. Thank you.
Is that a requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
It is.
It is. The chair...
And the Open Medias Act, that's a requirement? I have to look at it.
You're addressing the chair?
I'm addressing the taxpayers of Waukegan.
The chair, Margaret. This way. Thank you.
Okay, so you can start my time now. I don't even know where to start. So the first category is public works. Yes, it's true, the Waukegan pothole theory. In Waukegan, you fill the potholes at night, I mean, in the morning, and they multiply by four during the night. Okay? So we do have thousands of potholes, and some are perennial, I've noticed. They never get filled. So the taxpayers want to know, where do they have to go to file a claim? Is there an online forum for the blowing tires and expensive car repairs? In addition to that, it appears that some wards get more repairs or snow plowing than others. So maybe there's some kind of tracking so we can monitor that. Some places, cities have it online. Number two, the concern is the police department. The word on the street is that there was an officer who was busted for collecting not only thousands and thousands of dollars of overtime, but also working two jobs, well, at the same time with the city of Waukegan. Taxpayers, mayor, want to know, why hasn't this person been fired? Next, under the category of the mayor's favorite word, misinformation. The gentleman that was here this evening addressing about the fire department, I'm sorry, sir, but you don't have the whole story. It is true that there has been an increase in costs. It is true that the fire department has been without a contract for months, 10 months to old. It is true that the mayor last year stated to taxpayers misinformation. The mayor stated that the need for the property tax increase was to do, had a list of different items. However, the money was misused. Instead, he hired 40 new non-union positions instead of hiring firemen. Instead, the jobs went to families, extended family members, and folks, there's more to come. In April, the mayor, you stated publicly about doing a forensic audit. Still, nothing has been done. Taxpayers, I assure you, there's lots of money flowing in and out of City Hall. You have no idea. Tonight, I printed out the payroll check roll. And guess what? Not all the names are on there, sir. And lastly, if you look at tonight's agenda...
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
Thank you.
Bob Johnson.
Hi, Bob Johnson. I've lived in the 9th ward for 18 years now. Just found out about this ethylene oxide thing, so I'm concerned. I have three kids, and my wife had breast cancer four years ago, so, you know, a little bit concerned. But my background is PhD in analytical chemistry with a lot of experience in environmental science and in worker safety. So my only comment is I agree with all of the comments up here and with the health concerns of a couple of people. But these tests are very well established, very reliable, no reason not to do them, and they can be done at pretty moderate cost. So back up what everybody else says is definitely something that we should do.
Thank you. Tia Tanaka.
Hi, my name is Tia Tanaka. I'm a senior scientist. The quote that you saw earlier, I got that quote today, the, I just want to make a point that the vendor is a certified lab. They have done testing, similar testing for the city of Darien. They have done testing for Willowbrook. So they're a well-established facility. I'm in the process of getting quotes from two other vendors, thinking it's going to be ballpark in the same number, and you saw that the numbers weren't very high. So for that reason, and for the reasons that we know that ethylene oxide is carcinogen, it's a class-one carcinogen, and we know that very, very little amounts of ethylene oxide are toxic and can cause cancers. So for those reasons, I think it's very obvious that the best thing to do is to test, get independent testing done. Once we know what levels we're dealing with, then we can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Henning.
Hello, Mayor Cunningham, city council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Susan Henning. I'm a 24-year resident of Gurnee. I live on the border of Gurnee and Waukegan, within the distance of Medline and Vantage. I am a cancer survivor. I am here to urge you to do independent testing of these facilities. Medline is in Waukegan. I urge you also to work with the village of Gurnee and also partner with them to do the independent testing for both of these facilities. I do hope I have your attention because I am a cancer survivor. Please, it is urgent that we do this independent testing. I very much appreciate your willingness to partner with the U.S. and Illinois officials and EPA of both the United States and Illinois, but it just isn't fast enough. We need to know. We need to know now. We just found out in November that these facilities are emitting ethylene oxide. So please, please find the money in your budget, and I will be speaking to the village of Gurnee also to ask them to partner with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nahid Kumawala.
Hi, respectful leaders. I'm resident of Gurnee, resident of Gurnee for 14 years. You can, oh. Hi, respectful leaders. I'm resident of Gurnee. My name is Nahid Kumawala, and I lived in Gurnee for 14 years. And I'm here so again to talk about ethylene oxide. And ethylene oxide has been emitted by Medline and Vantage near schools, near residential s, near parks, near daycares, and it's very toxic. It's caused cancers. So I urge and I demand to have independent air testing. Once we know the independent air testing, once we know the result, we can make a further decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Ann Nelson.
Hi. It's my first time, so bear with me. I wanted to talk about what's going on with everyone's health, and I'm sure all of you live in Waukegan, because that's why you represent Waukegan. And I know that you know that just because your yard is your yard, that the wind doesn't stop blowing and, you know, the chemicals that are actually in the air don't stop just because you're a council member. Unfortunately, I have to say exact words, like I have to say scientific words that I don't know much about because I'm not a scientist. I actually need to pick up cake and Kool-Aid today before I go home. And so that's what I should be thinking about, and I can't because I'm here. I can't be home with my kids. I'm sure you have relatives who breathe the same air as all of us. So I would like to say that I live in the city of Waukegan, and I'm in the 6th ward, and I'm concerned about ETO emissions in our air. Because we all breathe the air, and even our firefighters, like, you know, give them a contract, geez, guys. Whenever I need to, whenever I have, I have a budget, and cake and Kool-Aid is a part of it, right? So I need to budget everything, including when somebody gets sick, going to the hospital, needing to pay the hospital bill, no matter what that number says. And I have to budget that in, and I have to budget the car budget in. So why don't we budget this, our budget in, and just go ahead and pay for the testing so that we can shit or get off the pot? Thank you.
Ma'am, no profanity, please.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
My first time. Sorry.
Thank you.
I understand.
Maurice Barnett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maurice Barnett, Stretch. We're here at the last council meeting a few weeks ago, speaking about Stretch's Sports Bar and Grill. Now, I come here to bash or anything. It's more so to just say that we're back open, and I appreciate the help from Mr. Steve Lindsey, Mr. Mike, from the building department, as well as the fire department, walking me through every step daily to get us back up and running. We still have a lot of obstacles and a lot of things that keep me awake, my wife awake every night, due to uncertainty of our future. Right now, the, in the past several weeks, you know, we, there's one thing that's, it's a cloud that's been hanging over our head, and that's with the hotel being closed down in the Ramada Inn where we're located, and a very large water bill that's been left unpaid. Been trying to find something reasonable or resolved so we can wake up as hard-working individuals and have our business open. We still haven't received any resolve from that, but with the mayor, he spoke and allowed, and we went down and put a deposit that wasn't ours on the hotel's water bill to hopefully buy a little more time. But I don't believe it's fair to have to wake up every day wondering if you're going to show up and your business is closed due to a water bill that's not yours. So I'm just asking for just some type of information so there's a resolve to keep us open longer for, I'm not looking for any, a freebie or a handout. I'm willing to pay our fair share of whatever it is. But I just think this is something that I would hope that we can find a resolution behind, because we know there's an absentee owner of a large establishment in the Ramada Inn who's in another country, Abu Dhabi, Dubai. He essentially just walked away and not speaking with anyone. So I'm not sure he really cares about the property, but I've put a lot of money. My wife, we put a lot of heart and headache, and we've been proud to be able to accomplish what we have thus far in less than two years. I believe we're doing good things in the community to help this community, and I would love for us to be able to stay open and not allow this latest obstacle of the water bill for the city to be the reason that we're shut down. So I just ask you, Mayor, and Mr. Doug Durango, who's the city council, who's kind of been dealing back and forth with our attorney, to find a resolution for us, to help us when we can sleep at night and know that we'll wake up with a business. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Salami.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann. I live in this area, and I am really concerned about the ETO issue. ETO is harming my family, my community, and my own environment. Why should we be able to say, I'm going outside to get some fresh air? Why should we be scared when we're going outdoors? And most importantly, why is nothing being done? To start, we need our own independent air testing. Therefore, we assure the data integrity, and the EPA will start to contribute to this issue. All we need to do is measure just a bit. Doesn't everybody deserve clean air? We deserve it. You deserve it, so please make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Ralph Peterson.
Hello, everyone. Speaking to the citizens of all you good citizens...
Stop the clock. Mr. Peterson, please turn this way, sir.
It breaks my heart...
Mr. Peterson...
...for you to have to come here...
Mr. Peterson...
...and plead...
Mr. Peterson...
...for your life in a safe environment. This is not a third-world country. This is not a third-world country.
Mr. Peterson...
It breaks, it breaks my heart that you have to...
You're out of order, Mr. Peterson.
Now, what I want to say to you all...
If we have to ask you again, you will be removed, Mr. Peterson.
...to you, I'm here for you, the citizens, tonight. That's who I'm addressing, addressing. It breaks my heart that you're going through this and you have to plead for your own safety. It should be a given that they would be all over this. Now, that brings me to say, there's an old saying, if you always do what you have always done, you will always get what you have always got. What needs to happen here is there needs to be a switching out of quite a few of these aldermen. And I tell you the truth when I tell you that the casino is priority, way more than your health, and that's no good. And that's no good. Really, as I speak, my head hurts. I often wonder if I've contacted something through this air pollution. It's important that you citizens know that you're the boss. They're not your boss. You're their boss. And I ask you to remember, when it was time to raise taxes, remember those aldermen, who raised taxes? Switch them out. It's time for change, people. A lot of this we bring on ourself. I think of Alderman Moseo is up this trip. Get rid of him. Margaret will be transparent. She will tell the truth. Her record shows. Get him, get him out of there.
Mr. Peterson, you're out of order. Electioneering on the council floor.
And ask for Seager.
Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson.
I view him.
Remove Mr. Peterson from the room.
I view Seager as looking competent.
Remove Mr. Peterson from the room.
I view Seager as incompetent.
On the floor.
Lost his face.
Remove Mr. Peterson from the building.
And I have no idea.
The building, sir.
Why you would not.
You were meant to be removed, sir.
Get rid of him.
Remove Mr. Peterson from the building.
I feel I have a constitutional right.
Remove Mr. Peterson from the building. Electioneering on the council floor. You're out of order, sir. Thank you. Let's remove him. Let's remove him. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you. Just to be clear for the audience who was first time from the chamber. Just to be clear, why Mr. Peterson has been removed, there's no electioneering on the council floor or during public meeting. He's right, he can address, but no electioneering. We've asked him once, we've asked him twice, and three times, that's why we're asking to be removed. We would then be talking with our corporate counsel if we can just maybe penalize him for doing that. It's just not right. None of us can do it, none of you can do it, so we don't, we're not going to allow anyone else to do it. Unfortunately, thank you, unfortunately, that's what it is and we apologize, but the public time, the public comment time is for you to do exactly what most of you did today. And we appreciate that. I can, I think all the aldermen can say, "We appreciate the feedback." And that's what it's all about, but not to make a mockery of that process. So, thank you.
Sir, the, the audience time is now over. Thank you.
Your Honor, Your Honor.
Alderman Moseo.
With, I'm going to go a little out of turn here because most of these people will not stick around till Alderman's time. I wouldn't either. But I'm going to make, I can't make a motion and we can't do it because it's not on the agenda, but I would like to thank Dylan for giving me this piece of paper. I think we didn't know, have any idea how much this would cost, but I think we can find $43,000 to test the air by next council meeting. Now, hold on. Some people will see that as electioneering, but it's not. Let's just make that clear. We all have the right to clean air no matter where you're at. And I'm glad that these people came. And just a little background on this company, this is the same company that Dylan gave me that did the Willbrook. So they, the first thing I asked him when I went out there, I said, "What's this company? Have they, they've done this before?" So, I myself would like to have some ammunition when we go up against the EPA and say, "Look it. We have some ammunition." People are right. The EPA's always been dragging their feet. They always do. And I don't think it's time to wait anymore, drag on our feet. I think we need some ammunition. We at least need to know what it is. And I get it. Forty-three thousand. Thank you. If, and I, we probably have to go out for bid. So there may, somebody said they're in the, in the process of contacting other things. So, again, this is, this is where government frustrates us all, including us up here, is we probably have to go out to bid and see who could, who comes in with the lowest qualified bid. But I think we can hopefully make that happen pretty quick. Yes, ma'am. Can she speak? I'd like to go out of turn here and let her speak.
Let's, let's, let's get a motion. Motion, Alderman Moseo, second, Alderman May. All those in favor, so allow this one young lady to come to the podium. We're going to go with another three minutes. All those in favor? Motion's passed and carried. Ma'am, ma'am, just to be clear, it's another three minutes. We're, it's consistent, okay?
No, take your time.
Take.
Three minutes.
And your name?
Kea Tanaka. I, I just wanted to say that the company that I'm picking, I'm not picking them based on price because this is not coming from my family's budget. I am looking for quality. I want quality so that we don't have to doubt their numbers. I don't, I want quality so that we don't have to repeat this twice. I want quality so that when we find out what these numbers are, we can make informed decisions, real informed decisions.
Correct.
And, and I think that's, that's the most important thing.
To me, that's what all of us want up here. We want to make the correct decision. We want to know, we have to have some evidence and some facts.
Right.
Again, and I want to be able to go to the EPA and say, "Look it. Why are you guys dragging your..." Or if it comes, God, let's hope it comes back that there's nothing wrong. But I don't know that. I don't have any, I don't have any evidence.
Right.
I need evidence and I want to be able to go to them and say, "Look it. Why are you dragging your feet?"
At the same time, I just want to make a note that I don't think this study would substitute an EPA study. The EPA has been lagging in protecting us. They have to do full background studies to really measure what the ETO levels everywhere is. What's a real negative control? And they don't really know that. So, this will not substitute the EPA study. The EPA still has to come here. They still have to test. But this at least would give us reason to, to take further action if we have to take, or it will calm our fears.
And again, anybody that's gone to court knows you need evidence.
Right.
You can't just say something. You need evidence. Hopefully, this will give us some evidence if we have to go down that road. But, again, what this also gives us is it gives us pressure.
Right.
We have to put pressure. And part of pressure is evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need you to.
But just to be clear, everyone, we probably want to do the bid thing first. That's just our normal process. That's our normal process. It is government and.
Can we, can we put that on the next agenda in two weeks?
Yeah, we can do that. But let me, I'm also, I'll, I'll reach out to Mayor Kabrick and let's get her thoughts on it. Maybe it could be something joint.
Cost share.
Yeah, cost share. We can, I'll do that. So, and we're going to say that, but the most important thing is, is that we're all talking civilly and to move this process along. So, thank you for your comments to us. This works. This process works. Not in the time you'd like it to, but it works, in my opinion. So, let's move forward. All right, next on the agenda.
Can I just chime in one little thing?
Alderman Villalobos.
I'm just throwing this out there too. If you can't find it within the budget, I would vote yes to using our stabilization funds, just so, that's out there too.
We want to be.
If we can't find it within budgets.
We, we, we want to be very cautious of that.
I understand.
Let's, let's just.
I understand, but if that's, if that's the path you have to go, understand I'm willing to walk that path.
All right, yeah, we'll be cautious about that. Let us right now, let us first do the reaching out, find out where we're at from costs and who and all, our normal process, then we move from there. And I'll work with all the departments to, to see what we can do to, to come up with this and, and move forward, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, but that being said, I, number four, motion by, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve, to adopt as presented Resolution 18-R-11 honoring the life of Dr. Mary Lacy. And I think we have that already. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seager, to approve monthly charter report. Any questions? All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Special Judiciary, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on the Judiciary Committee this evening was a motion to authorize a memorandum of understanding with the Lake County Audubon Society. And we did receive a nice presentation. And Mayor, I know you were in our initial meetings with the Lake County Audubon Society about our, sharing our shore partnership. And it was voted on unanimously in committee tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the Lake County Audubon Society.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Just voice or, just a voice.
Voice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Thank you. Next item is a resolution authorizing the sale of 108-112 South Sheridan Road.
All right. Before we get, get to that, that item B, I do want to say this regarding the item A, there was a sighting of a bald eagle. Not just a sighting, but one of the former first ladies, Mayor Morris's wife, actually, did she take the picture? Or she physically took the picture?
Is she here?
She took a picture. So we have a picture of a bald eagle in Waukeg. That's not a big deal to everybody, it's a big deal to us.
It is a big deal.
It's a big deal. So I just wanted to really mention that. Thank you for.
Emma's raising her, Mayor Emma England from Lake County Audubon Society is raising her hand.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. You got, did you get the picture of the bald eagle?
I, I didn't get the picture, but I just want to say, there's been regular sightings over the last few weeks and there's a pair of bald eagles that are hanging out at the power plant.
Oh.
And also, a quick thank you for passing our memorandum of understanding. We're very excited about our program.
Well, thank you very much. We're excited as well. I come to get my binoculars.
I guess.
All right, thank you. All right, item B, there, there's a motion on the floor, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Are there any questions to the motion?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Alderman Villalobos.
Please do.
There, there was some discussion and, and one thing that I had mentioned during the meeting was, and I, I understand and agree with your initiative and the administration's initiative to get city-owned properties back on the tax rolls and into the hands of private owners. But on this particular piece of land, it's kind of a crucial piece in the downtown, in the downtown area, right there on the bluff of Sheridan Road. I know that it doesn't seem like it's a property that's worth much to people, but it is a piece of, that falls under our master plan and I don't think that more parking lots is what we really need. There's a lot of parking lots that already exist around there. So, it was floated by a couple people. Is there a possibility if, if this, if the contract purchaser really wants to have parking on this parcel, is there a lease agreement or something that we could come up with until we really know where we're moving with those pieces, those parcels along Sheridan Road? So I'm just going to, you know, I'm just, I'm relaying the conversation from the Judiciary Committee to the floor. Thank you.
All right, I, I'm going to respond to that, but Alderman Villalobos, did you have some, a comment?
Yeah, it's kind of piggyback Alderman May's. I voiced this from the start, this concern of mine that because we don't know what's going on with this, where the GW, Greater Waukeg Development Coalition's proposal is, and they're mentioning that this land sits on opportunity zone and that land, that land is part of their proposal and it'll help with their funding opportunities. They do have plans for some development there. I question if this is the best use for the land there. I do understand we are trying to get property back on the tax rolls, but again, for the downtown area, again, is a parking lot the best use? I don't think so. There's ample parking downtown. Parking lots are underutilized, particularly the one across the street from the building itself too. This is nothing against Mr. Hughes. I've had this discussion with him. I told him like this, until I understand what's going on with this development proposal, it doesn't make sense to me to, to put this before us. It's putting the car in front of the horse in my eyes. Because we don't, that still sits in front of me, that proposal still sits in front of me too, as something we have not even finalized or discussed, yes or no even. So I do have concern about this. I, I can't sit, I can't sit here and, and go for this, going forward. Thank you.
Well, I just, I, I just want to let every, all the aldermen know just in case you do not know. Unfortunately, that piece of parcel sits on a ravine. We all know that, right? You know, we passed an ordinance that you cannot build, what is it, 30, what is it, 30 feet? Within 30 feet of the ravine. It's going to be a parking lot anyway. You cannot build on this particular parcel of land. History lesson. I don't think anyone here remembers the old Community Action Project Building.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, CAP, it was the old CAP Building. The old CAP Building, part of its building was part of the ravine. When we bought it to help them relocate to Western Avenue, I say Western, but it's on Glen Flora, but we say Westering, of course. One of the, the ideas was for us to tear it down and we didn't have any really idea. We, there were no plans for that parcel because it was just to move CAP out of that location. That was the goal at the time. When we passed the ravine ordinance, we essentially crippled that piece of parcel. So I, while I understand what you're saying, the fact of the matter is, it can't be nothing but a parking lot. Who would more benefit than the person who owns one of the biggest piece of parcel and building than Mr. Hughes? It's a natural fit. So, and with that being said, that's the reason, where it's like, okay, this is one piece of proper, parcel that probably made the most sense. He's the only one who can benefit from it. His tenants will be able to park or do every, what he wants. So I was going to make some, some provisions there to make sure it's blacktop and all that, but as far as the use, this is the only and best use considering what we have done already. Obviously, the ravine ordinance is about seven, eight years old, I want to say. I mean, you, you can't do anything with that parcel regardless. And as far as GWDC, unfortunately, we have not received a proposal that we can move forward on. So I, I understand. I, I do understand what you're saying. I'm just giving you, these are some of the facts and the reason why we went, we went this direction.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely, Alderman May.
I would just float the idea, if there's going to be a development, that the parking lot isn't necessarily the only option. Green space is nice too.
Touche, yes, it is. And it has been green space for a while, but I, I guess I was just, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, his building, he's parking off the street, his customers, he has, that was just the best use for the land at this point in time.
Your Honor.
Alderman Moseo.
My, my opinion is, is sell it and if GWC comes back with their stuff and they want to buy it from Mr. Lee, right, Mr. Lee, is it, is it?
Hughes.
I might say Lee. Hughes, I'm sorry. I'm sure he would sell it back to them. But again, we don't, get it off, get it down the tax rolls at least for a little bit.
I agree. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
I need to abstain.
Pardon me?
I'm abstaining. No vote.
Abstaining.
Like abstaining. Not voting on the issue.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next item is a resolution authorizing the sale of 1402 Washington Street. And Mayor, the committee voted to recommend a denial for the sale of 1402 Washington Street. So it's recommend. So it's recommend, the recommendation was to deny. So I don't know how we want to present it to council, but it was voted down in committee.
All right, so the recommendation right now for item C is a yes will be, to deny the sale, correct?
Your Honor, here was, may I, if I may, Alderman May?
Absolutely.
Here was some of the conversation in the committee. It's two parcels separated by our alley. If anybody knows, it's Butrick and Washington.
Right.
And it's a parking lot now that we take care of two of them. And I think the price is, somebody's gonna give us five thousand for it, is that correct? I don't know. That was the price?
Five thousand proposal, yes.
Five thousand dollars. A little bit under value. But again, how much is it costing us to plow it and monkey around with it and insure it and all of that? That's that problem. The other problem is, is that area does need parking. It's got a lot of businesses on it in Washington Street there, and there's not a lot of places to park on the street. And then there's only, the side streets are a little bit crowded. So are we better off keeping it and allowing people to park it? And maybe what we need to do is look at the numbers on both sides. How much is it costing us? If we sold it, how much would it generate in taxes? Is it worth us to keep it? If it's only generating a little bit of taxes, it may be better off for us just to keep. That goes against my philosophy of getting rid of city land. But that's the quandary, I think, at least I felt like I was in, is there is a need for parking over there, but, and we're not getting a good price for it, so I don't know. Do we hold it over and try to get a better deal in months of numbers, or do we just vote it yes or no? I don't know.
I think we can do, but let me just, again, going back to, if you take a look at that parking lot, in the time we've had, this parcel of land, I have eighteen years up here for me, Alderman Valco tells me it's been a bit, what was it before, what was it called? Alderman Valco, the spot that was torn down? What was that building?
That was Bud's Midwest.
Bud's Mid, I'm sorry. Alderman Seager, Bud's Midwest.
Our janitors...
Kennedy Pro Shop?
No, no.
Kennedy Pro Shop.
No.
Well, hold on.
Across the street.
Hold on a second, Alderman Val, I got a history lesson. That was Kennedy Pro Shop originally. Then, we remember Kennedy Pro Shop on Grand Avenue, but...
No, on the south side of the street was Kennedy Pro Shop.
Across the street where the daycare is.
Across from the parking.
Oh, okay. Well, here it is, a commercial businesses that utilize it right now. The people who look in to buy is the same people who own the commercial businesses. And I guess to use Alderman Moseo's philosophy, they're the only ones who are gonna benefit from it. Right now, we're the ones who, plowing, maintenance, liability, all of that's on the city right now. Someone gets, if there's a pothole or a water line break or whatever, we're the ones responsible for it. So I get the need to probably want to hold it, but what are we holding it for? That's all. Why are we holding this particular parcel of land when the only benefactors are those who own the building? Let them go through and lease them out and rent them out. Why should we do it? That's my take on it.
Question, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor, and I think Alderman Newsome might have had some, Alderman Taylor.
Would they still be keeping this as a parking lot, or because it's zoned that they could actually build on it and that create more congestion? Like what, do we know their intentions at all?
The intentions was for them to hold that for their tenants. That's the intention. And maybe we, for us, we can put some of these conditions in, you know, part of the sale. But the goal is, my ultimate goal, was to get them off of just vacant land the city's owning. That was the goal.
It was offered at ten thousand before, right? And now it's been reduced to five?
Well, I, we thought that they ran away from, well, the counter was...
Is this the same buyer?
It's the brother. It's the brother.
No, I mean, this is a separate buyer. It does share a similar last name. But to the mayor's point, I mean, any of the conditions of the sale could be negotiated. There is no offer, firm offer, contract in place right now. So, you know, the council could either hold this over, put conditions on it, or go into executive session at a future meeting to discuss purchase price or...
I think we should hold it over.
I agree. If no one disagrees, I'd like to hold it over.
Okay, we hold it, that's fine. We're gonna be presented with these type of properties over the next two years, three years, four years. So we're starting it. I mean, it's good conversation, but I'm glad you brought that up. It is, we want it to stay what it is, but we just want to get them off the tax, get them off of the city's log of properties, as you would say. All right, so the matter is held over by Alderman...
I do have a question, though.
No problem. The matter is held over by Alderman Moseo, Alderman Villalobos.
Thank you. Just for quick clarification, this petitioner has affiliation to the building itself? Is it relative? Is the building owner? Because again, it's different first names, same last names, but is there a familial connection? And this person has interest in the buildings that are there, or is it some separate entity?
At this point, I am totally unaware of who this particular buyer is. The last offer came from the owner of that building and that business.
Correct, yeah, Lisbeth and...
I think it's his brother, one of the brothers.
Okay, because again, to the mayor's point, we're trying to benefit those, if it is to the benefit of those building owners, we want to make sure it's, that's what we're going towards and it's not a separate entity. But yeah, I think we should hold it over. And also, as a point that was brought up previously, the city of Waukegan did go to the CMAP, Chicago Metrology for planning, and requested an LTA, a local technical assistance, which means we tap into their expertise to assess a parcel, a stretch of road for us, which was Washington Street corridor. Through their expertise, they did state that this public parking is a benefit to that corridor as a whole. All right, so we asked experts to give us their opinions. This is the opinion they gave us.
And I did see that, I was a part of that. When I see a part, I was in Alderman at the time.
Correct.
We can put it in the, part of the condition to leave it as parking. We do not have to own it. What was our goal? Our goal. I understand what CMAP's are, but what does the city of Waukegans go? And at that time, did we tell them that we wanted to remove all of these parcels of lands that we own? No, we didn't. We told them what we told them then. There's a new type of philosophy today, and that's the philosophy that I think all of us are moving to. But hey, we holding it over, have a little bit more questions, a little bit better direction, but the goal is keep moving to get rid of these properties. We just have way too many. And what concerns me more than anything is the liability exposure that the city now has. No one, I mean, no one understands more about liability than us. We can't afford, nor do we want, anyone to get hurt, God forbid, if a pipe or culvert breaks down. Who knows what's underneath there? The goal is to move forward with analyzing, strategizing, getting rid of these unwanted properties that we're doing nothing with over the last twenty, thirty, forty, almost fifty years. That's the goal. How we get there, we get there together. We have some great minds up here that I know we can move forward. Alderman Newsome had had a comment. Alderman Newsome.
Yeah, the question that I had was, should we sell this property, it's a parking lot now, will it become private parking only?
Of course it will.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume for the business owner.
Right.
Yeah.
And then that it will alleviate, I mean, that would, I mean, we'd still have a probable parking on Washington Street for the other businesses. Say across the street, or somebody revises the restaurant across the street, then where do they park? If there's no parking on the street.
Well, I think the position would be for them to negotiate with those who own it right now, or who would then own it then. And again, I hear, these are a lot of great questions. I was moving forward, I should say, we were moving forward on getting rid of these parcels of land that the city owns, that we're doing nothing with. That was the, that was the goal. And that's the goal we're going. Now, how we do it, we're gonna come up with some, you know, more ideas, and I think there's a great one to put some provisions in there as we move forward. But as it stands right now, this has been a vacant piece of property more than twenty
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a working parking lot for the corridor that's very busy on Washington Street. It's used by multiple businesses. I'd say if we're gonna start thinking about selling properties, and I know that you're working on this with staff, that we get some fair market analysis done, and let's present them for sale and let people bid on them, rather than these onesie-twosie offers coming in. We get a ten thousand dollar bid, now we got a five thousand dollar bid. That's not how you sell real estate.
And I agree with you, Alderman, but they came, they came in.
Yeah.
That was, that was the push. So I said, my question is, submit a bid and we'll present it.
Okay.
Now, if that's, if that's the route we all want to take, we, just so all of you know, Noel and our Planted and Zoning Director has finished the assessment of all of our properties. We have a nice binder. I think there was one more tweak we wanted to do before we give it all to you. The goal then was to put that online and to do exactly what you're talking about. This particular parcel came up during a ribbon-cutting ceremony that myself and Alderman Villalobos was at. They asked us at, you know, and I think you, in the world of selling, you have a buyer, you move on. And that's what we did here.
Okay.
So I think this process has helped us develop, okay, what we're looking for, what we want, and where we're going. I was charged with, here it is, we have somebody, let's go. All right? Well, thank you. I really appreciate the feedback. And I think as we move forward, we're gonna have more of these coming up, and we'll be much more prepared for it. So thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And we're ready to roll.
All right, next item, item D. Motion to approve an ordinance amending the Class T liquor license fee. This is our nonprofit occasional liquor license fee. For mostly our nonprofits utilize this license. They're limited to three times a year. It's currently at two fifty per event. We're recommending fifty dollars per day per event, since these are nonprofit agencies using it. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. Motion's passed and carried.
And next item is item E, a motion to approve an ordinance amending prohibited parking on Berwick Boulevard. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moseo. The question, I'm sorry, second by Alderman Newsome.
Yeah.
Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Oh, I forgot. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
And then, Mayor, the last item, item F. Per request, we've voted to send that item to Public Safety Committee in two weeks.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Hold on, you, do we want to take the rest of the agenda omnibus? Can we do it in finance, Alderman?
Alderman Valco, you agree?
Um...
Except for item E, we're gonna hold that over?
Correct.
Per Alderman Valco and second by Alderman Moseo.
Correct. Item E was gonna get held over.
The finance and public works.
Then I'm okay.
Can we omnibus the rest?
All right, all right then, here we go then.
Can we?
Yes.
We have a motion.
I'm gonna get it. Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Moseo, to omnibus. Simply what omnibus means, everybody, we're gonna take one motion and handle all of items, finance and public works. All right, everybody?
All right.
Minus item E in Finance Committee. So there's a motion on the floor and a second to omnibus, items seven and eight, minus seven E.
Correct.
Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. All right, let's roll.
Ready?
We need a voice for it? Yeah, we're good, let's go.
We gotta read them.
Okay, we gotta read them now. Alderman Valco.
Yes, sir.
And then Alderman Newsome will do the public works. Alderman Valco.
Seven A, motion to approve a proposed amendment to the 2018 Annual Action Plan, a component of the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan, as presented by the Community Development Block Grant Department. Item B, a motion authorizing the Informational Technology Director to enter into a contract, excuse me, with Diallex, D-I-L-T-E-X, in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing and replacement workstations funded from budget Item C, a motion authorizing the city clerk to renew a contract with Diligent Corporation. This is for board docs, in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars annually for a three-year term for the purpose of agenda management funding from budget code Item D is a motion to approve a fountain square of, a fountain square of Waukegan 29 Common Area Expense Allocation of eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And funding from this item is 100-806824438. This breaks down, this is, that's a total annual, quarterly, it's gonna be twenty-one thousand, five forty-six. And since they owe us money from last year, I believe it's around two thousand dollars credit that we're gonna get, excuse me, we're only gonna owe twenty-one thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand. We have a credit of two or three thousand dollars at the end of the next quarter. Item F is authorization, Corporation Council negotiate a temporary lease agreement with Waukegan Main Street. An ISO move and all of them, sir.
Public Works. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve the resolution adopting the Des Plaines River Watershed Base Plan provided by the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission. Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve change order number one with Illinois Pump for the additional amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. The contract was previously approved by council on February 20th, 2018, for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. The total for change order number one will be fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Funds to be charged to line item 555916027018. Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Burris Equipment, and also a good faith waiver per section 2-458 subsection I, 7, through April 30th, 2019. It is estimated that an approximate total of thirty-two thousand may be spent, thirty-two thousand dollars may be spent with Burris Equipment for parts, equipment, and rentals. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items as multiple departments use Burris Equipment as a vendor. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve expenditures in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Monroe Trucking per section forty-two dash four five eight subsection I subsection three joint purchasing program through Sourcewell NJPA through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is estimated that an approximate total of twenty-eight thousand dollars may be spent with Monroe Trucking for vehicle parts. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items as multiple departments use Monroe Trucking as a vendor. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with industrial systems and also a good faith waiver per section two dash four five eight subsection I subsection seven through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is estimated that an approximate total of twenty thou- twenty-five thousand dollars may be spent with industrial systems for liquid beet heat. Funds are currently charged to MFT Motor Fuel Tax Funds line item two two eight nine two two eight two five four eight five. Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve expenditures in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Lakeside Trucking and also a good faith waiver per section two dash four five eight subsection I subsection seven through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is estimated that an approximate total of thirty-five thousand dollars may be spent with Lakeside Trucking for vehicle parts and equipment. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items as multiple departments use Lakeside Trucking as a vendor. Item G, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Waukegan Tire per section forty-two dash four five eight subsection I subsection three joint purchasing program through state and local government contract pricing code G O O O five three two eight through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is estimated that an approximate total of thirty thousand dollars may be spent with Waukegan Tire for vehicle tires. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items as multiple departments use Waukegan Tire as a vendor. Item H, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Altefer, formerly patent CAT, per section forty-two dash four five eight subsection I subsection, subsection three joint purchasing program through Sourcewell NJPA through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is currently, there is currently one hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars that has been spent with this vendor. It is estimated that an approximate total of one hundred and eighty thousand may be spent with Altefer for plow blades and vehicle parts to be used during winter months. Current, funds currently charged to line item one zero zero nine one zero five two five four seven four. Item I, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve expenditures in excess of twenty thousand dollars for trade, tread rock per section forty-two dash four five eight subsection I subsection three joint purchasing program through state of Illinois, non-contract, all cities, counties, and schools code seven one two nine through April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It is estimated that an approximate total of thirty thousand dollars may be spent with tread rock for vehicle and equipment tires. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items as multiple departments use tread rock as a vendor. Item J, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve payment to Cappanel and Sons for an emergency water main break on Sunset Avenue per section two dash four five eight subsection I subsection two bona fide operating emergency for an amount not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-seven cent. Funds to be charged to line item five 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 nine one six zero two seven zero four three and ISO move.
Mayor.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions to them? Alderman, Alderman Taylor.
Before we take the vote, can we just clarify for the audience? Because there was someone who mentioned tonight about at Fountain Square using that eighty-six thousand dollars. We are not improving the grounds there. It, it's basically, am I explaining it correctly?
It's a maintenance cost.
Yeah, but it's not like we, it, that we can't do that. It's part of the HOA type of agreement that we have. It's not like we're doing an additional thing there.
No.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the audience.
And I do wanna say, it was ninety-five thousand. We, I think we renegotiated with, with the, with the owners or the property, was it property managers, Noel? Of, of the whole Fountain Square area. We brought the cost down about ten thousand, but I think we used to pay ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five something.
Ninety-five thousand. And we've held their property well over ten-plus years. There, right, Noel? All right, I'm asking that, 'cause she, Noel keeps a.
I just wanted to make that, so the audience understood what that was.
Thank you for bringing that up. But yeah, this is, this is not a, this is part of our maintenance cost for that particular area. All right? Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman V, Alderman Valco, second by, uh, by Alderman Villalobos. We're gonna omnibus item number ten as well. I will read them. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion to approve vendor payments dated February eighteenth, twenty nineteen, a total amount of five hundred and forty-four dollars and three hundred and ninety, five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion to approve regular payroll dated February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, a total amount of one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Uh, motion to approve PBLC Holiday Cash Back Payroll dated February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, in a total amount of thirteen thousand, eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Motion to approve electric officials civil service stipend payroll dated February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, a total amount of seven thousand, sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Motion to approve final cash out names dated, names appear on the roster payroll dated February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, in total amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Ald, Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item eleven, there being none, nor item nine, item twelve, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moseo.
Uh, motion to adjourn, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, Mayor, I, I know you allow people to attack you and, and, and up there, but I, I'm in the same camp. They can say whatever they want. I don't care. They can go up there and recite green eggs and ham. I just don't want a lawsuit about violating somebody's First Amendment rights or all that. I, I don't care. Go on up there, say whatever you want. I'm Waukegan tough. Don't make a darn bit of difference to me. Good night.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you. I first want to start off by saying thank you to all the community members that came out and spoke today regarding the ethylene oxide situation. As I stated earlier, I believe we need to look into doing this testing, and I'm glad that somebody's brought some information to us that actually, that gives me a, gives better sense of what we're looking at financially for this. So thank you. I've heard you, and I've been trying to work with some of these individuals to raise awareness. So I wanna say, speak on that. Number two, I do wanna take a little bit of time to let residents know. I was able to attend a forum, actually, sorry, a conference that was paid by the city. It was for the United States Hispanic Leadership Institute. And I felt it's incumbent upon me to share what I've learned and what I've gathered from that and some of the experience I had there. And also note that the initial price that we voted on, it was about maybe, it was at least a hundred and fifty dollars less through some governmental discounts for the hotel and the conference costs. But it might have been two hundred dollars less, actually, so, but those final numbers we come in, when I submit the paperwork. But this conference was entitled Defending Democracy Aquí y Ahora, Here Now. And so there was individuals that spoke there. There was former U.S. ambassadors, Honorable Bill Richardson, also former governor of New Mexico, former U.S. Secretary HUD and former mayor of San Antonio, Henry Cisneros. And this is just a couple of the people I'm cherry picking. The one big one, too, for me, and I actually got an opportunity to meet her, was Delora Suerta, who is instrumental in some of the social justice movements for migrant workers and still, still is a major social justice advocate. If you don't know her, look her up. She's, she, if you know Caesar Chavez, you should know Delora Suerta. I actually got the opportunity to meet her while I was checking in to the hotel and express how much she inspires me. And some of the forums, there was five forums I was able to attend. Just to give you a little heads up what they were about, the power diversity and equitable representation of workplace, empowering students of color through innovative education pathways, strengthening communities through diverse advocacy methods, defending democracy through public policy change, and creating social change through the arts. I did take notes. I will share my notes with my colleagues here, 'cause I think it's good for us to share these ideas. I do wanna note also for the fourth forum, Defending Democracy Through Public Policy Change. This one actually was pretty dyna, uh, we had a bunch of actual congresspeople there that were the moderator and panelists. So the forum moderator was Honorable Raul Grealoa. He's a congressman for the third district of Arizona. And then we had Honorable Chui, Jesus Chui Garcia, congressman for Illinois's fourth district, Congresswoman Deb, Honorable Deb Holland, who's congressman for New Mexico for the first district, Honorable Rajah Krishnamurti, congressman for Illinois's eighth district, and also Esther R. Lopez, International Secretary of Treasury for UFCW International Union. I express, I express these people just to give you a sense of the caliber of folks that were talking and the exposure I got and to let you know that my time there was not spent idly. I was active there. I also like to note, too, that there was thirty-eight students from College of Lake County there and a couple of faculty that were there to aid the students. So I think it was a great opportunity. I will be talking also to our school district. I'm on the board for Waukegan College. I've talked to Elise Dankers about possibly trying to send students to this. I think it's a great opportunity for individuals Hispanics, but also there's other people there as well from other ethnicities. So it's, it's been ongoing on. This is the thirty-seventh year the conference has gone on. So again, I just wanna share with the residents and the community that experience that I had, which I thought was very beneficial to me and I think will be beneficial for the community. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. I would like to talk a little bit about the water billing. It has come to, well, some different, different people have asked me about the water billing. And the process that we have now, since we went to monthly billing, it's only a fifteen day before your water bill is due. And if the bill is mailed out and the post office sits on it for a few days, then by the time you get your water bill, it's due in five or six days. So I did speak with Tina, and I would like to, I don't know what committee we could put that in. Maybe if we went from fifteen days to maybe twenty, I'm not sure if it would make a big difference. I know that they are pushing to have the residents do e-billing, online paying and things like that. But some people don't have access to computers or not able to do that. So I don't know if that would go into finance or...
No, we can, I'll talk to Tina and see what we come, then we'll touch base with you. It's necessary to go into new committee at this point.
Okay. Unlike comm. ed, your comm. ed bill or your gas bill, sometimes you bill after the fact, so there's no lag time in between. And we did discuss whether if we put it thirty days, then maybe your actual billing, what you used, is not showing up on the next month's bill. It'd be like behind. So something that we need to talk about, see where we can get a happy medium so that the residents aren't receiving their bill and then they only have six days to have it paid because there's a ten percent penalty if it's not paid on time, and then some other stuff goes into play. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Um, thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna try to be brief and maybe I'll come back to some of the things I wanted to talk about tonight since we had such an involved meeting. So ETO, I think you guys have got the message that we're, we're all behind funding study. We hear you and we, we are concerned about our air quality as well. So thank you for your activism. I went to your forum at the library, and so we appreciate all the work the community's doing on this and protect, you know, worrying about your neighbors and worrying about our health. Appreciate it very much. At the Judiciary Committee tonight, we did have a lengthy discussion about video gaming. There was no vote taken, but we find ourselves talking about video gaming quite a bit up here or in the community. So we, we gave Corporation Council a lot of different ideas that we had. You know, we, we don't wanna hurt our established bricks and mortar buildings, our bricks and mortar establishments in Waukegan. We don't wanna hurt them. But we also are tired of so many video gaming terminals in our city. You can't buy gas or do any, go out to eat anymore without seeing these machines. Right now, we have two hundred and sixty-three video gaming terminals, terminals and fifty-five establishments in Waukegan. We are the fourth most prolific video gaming city in Illinois. I don't know if we should be proud of that or not. So we always look, are looking for ways to raise revenue without raising your taxes and without trying to cut services. And something that caught my eye in an ordinance in another city was they actually tried to get some money from the operators as well. The operators are the people who just put the machines in our businesses. So the most, the one you see most often in town is taproom gaming. In January of twenty nineteen, last month, just the operators, just for having their machines, were just shy of six hundred thousand dollars is what they made in Waukegan. Which means that's the portion of what Waukegan lost, or whoever's putting the money in our machines. That's just for the operators. That's the same amount of money that the business owners get. As you know, the city gets the smallest piece of that pie. I want you to think about that. I want you to talk to your, your representatives up here. Talk to them. Tell them how you feel. Tell the candidates out there, 'cause they're all talking about it. Talk to them about gaming and how you feel about it. It, it, it's, it's an issue. There's a political action committee that's been put together, and it's called the Waukegan Voters Alliance. And it's funded by gaming money. And the Waukegan Voters Alliance, if you go to the Sunshine page, you'll find that they are funded by our most prolific gaming operator. So when you get your mailers, and I'm not electioneering, but notice who's funding the elections when you go to vote for your alderman in these upcoming elections. And think about what you want your city to look like and what you want video gaming to look like and what you want, 'cause then you know what the next thing is. It's the casino, okay? We had a resident come up and talk about the casino, who happens to be one of my constituents. And that's what I hear from my constituents. And I've got pages, because I've been reading about this for years, about the casino. I hope everyone saw the ProPublica WBEZ report. There's gonna be a four-series report. The first, the first part of that report is out. Millennials and market saturation raised doubts about the casino push. Millennials aren't into casinos. Who are, who are, who are we building our, our city for? Who, what kind of economic development do we want in our city for the upcoming generations? It's just food for thought. So the last item that I'll speak about, and I'll spare you all, 'cause I see it's nine thirty, is Fountain Square, which is all connected to all of this. Fountain Square has thirty-two acres that we bought for a casino how many years ago? We spend ninety, eighty thousand dollars a year on the maintenance of that parcel. And we're always saving it for this casino dream. We're waiting for the casino. Now we have a new governor who also talks about casino. He's always talking about how it should be near a state border. Man, I just feel like there's a, a focus on us here when it comes to gambling. And, you know, the reports show when the, when the annual, the household income goes down in, throughout Illinois, the, the saturation of video gaming and gambling goes up. Think about that. Why are, why, why, why are these industries wanting to prey on poor communities? I just want everyone to have this front of mind as we enter into these new elections. And you're gonna, you know, you're gonna elect your new council up here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Just one thing. Ladies, we first met you at the Warren Township High School. I'm sorry, the library, Alderman Taylor and I. And you put on a nice demonstration there. And your husband was there also, is that correct? And for forty-three thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for a study, if we could scrounge that up. Everybody, when you go back to your organization, there was not one person that came up here and was belligerent, yelling and screaming. Everybody said what they had to say. And it was, it was pleasant. It was informative.
it was, it was pleasant, it was informative. The only thing, when you get back to your group, or for yourself included, anybody else, when somebody says something good up here in your corner, don't clap, don't waste another 10, 15 seconds of that individual's time, because we're timing them up here, and that time is gone. So wait till they're done, and then clap to your heart's content and everything else. But again, congratulations. That's all I have.
Alderman Taylor.
Again, I just wanna thank ETO for coming, you, you know I've been at your meetings, I, I've listened to what you've said, believe me, this is of great concern to me, since this is the ninth ward. And, you know, we're, we're the hotspot, although we affect everybody else as well. As we've said, said, air doesn't just come in the, in one ward, it, it spreads through the city, so I, I'm so happy that we've decided to do this, and I would encourage us to look for ways to fund this, if other communities will pitch in, or whatever we can do, but certainly I'm so happy that Waukegan has taken this step, because it's a really important one. Um, second, I wanna talk a little bit, um, about, we've all talked about the potholes, I know it's been a big thing in the ward, I wanna thank Public Works for, for coming and helping out, and it's, it's a tough spot. I just want people to be patient with us, because this is a daily battle for us, and this weather, I think, has been so ridiculous this year with the temperature changes, so please just be patient with us. Last, I will not talk publicly about the casino issue, but I know many of my residents have come to me privately, and I am always willing to hear, um, your concerns about the casino, and believe me, there's been many. So, um, again, just call me personally on that, it's not something that, um, I think I wanna discuss up here during alderman time. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to openly acknowledge a woman in my first ward that has made an impact within the first ward and throughout our city, and that's none other than Reverend Dr. Mary Lacy. And her homegoing funeral will be this Saturday, uh, viewing is at nine o'clock, and the funeral will be started at 11:00, and it will be at 800 South Genesee in Waukegan. Uh, I too like to also validate the fact, I'm glad that we're going to, um, first of all, let me, many of you don't know, I work full-time for the Health Department, so health issues is a concern of mine, so I'm glad we're also going to reevaluate the fact of finding funding for, to resolve this issue with the ET, ETO levels. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I too would like to thank ETO. Uh, I just lost a very close friend, uh, and he didn't smoke, he didn't drink, from cancer, and, uh, I condolences goes out to his wife and family. His name was William Marsh, who was originally from North Chicago, so, and, uh, we, we can find this funding, we've got to find out what's going on with this, and I've been around the medical field for a long time, uh, so I agree, let's look into this, let's come up with some answers, 'cause I can't give my residents any information until I get the, the full information myself. And one more thing, I'd like to thank Public Works for their hard work, and I, I want, I'd like to ask the residents, please be, when the, the guys are out patching these potholes, and I call them in all the time, and, just be careful, slow your car, car down, watch out for our employees, 'cause they're out there working for you, you know? But Public Works, I thank all of you, please be careful. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moseo to adjourn, all those in favor? Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming.